Madam President, it is 7:00 PM.
Thank you. It is now 7 o'clock PM, and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Vice President Anderson. Counselor Blakely.
Hold on, we're not, we're not live yet.
Oh.
All right, can you call the order?
Vice President Anderson?
We're doing work, okay.
There you are. Counselor Blakely? Are you here, Counselor Blakely?
I'm here.
Okay. Counselor Farback?
Here.
Counselor Keys?
Here.
Counselor Levy?
Not on yet.
Counselor Preschel?
Here.
And President Duncan?
Here.
There are currently six present, one absent. We do have a quorum.
Counselors, please mute your phones and all rise and join me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations under special orders of the day and announcements. 3A is a proclamation declaring October 12th, 2020 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'll read it. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day began in commemoration of 573 years of survival and renewal of Indigenous nations in the face of genocide, colonization, political, religious, and cultural repression. And whereas, the Beloit City Council recognizes that the Indigenous peoples of this hemisphere that would later be known as the Americas have lived on these lands since the time immemorial. And the Beloit City Council recognizes the fact that City of Beloit is built upon the homelands of the Indigenous people of this region. And whereas, the City of Beloit values the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, land conservation techniques, along with deep spiritual cultural practice helped shape the character of the land known as Beloit. And whereas, the city of Beloit will continue to support Indigenous nations' social and environmental justice, religious freedom, and tribal sovereignty efforts. And whereas, the City of Beloit honors our country's Indigenous roots and correct history and seeks with this celebration to bring greater understanding of diversity by inclusion of Indigenous peoples' culture and voice to the table in the city of Beloit, Wisconsin. And whereas, the City of Beloit will recognize the desire of all Indigenous people representing all 574 tribal nations to celebrate the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day with special attention to Wisconsin's federally recognized tribal nations. Now therefore, the President of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim October 12th, 2020, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Beloit. Presented this 19th day of October, 2020, Regina Duncan, City Council President. And Madam President, we do have Elena Heaton and Shannon Fai present to accept this proclamation, and I believe they have a few words they'd like to share.
That'd be wonderful. So could the representatives from Beloit College please come forward at this time and receive the proclamation and share a few words if you would like to do so?
We would like to recognize that the City of Beloit is located on the ancestral lands of Native nations. In Wisconsin, there are 11 federally recognized Native American sovereign nations and one seeking to regain federal recognition. Beloit College is located on the traditional territory of the Potawatomi, Peoria, Miami, Meskwaki, and Ho-Chunk people. We want to respectfully acknowledge those who have stewarded this land throughout countless generations. Land acknowledgements do not exist in the past tense or outside historical context. Colonialism is an ongoing process, and we need to build our mindfulness of our present participation. As members of the Beloit College community and allies of Native nations, we thank you for your leadership in recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Indigenous Peoples' Day started in 1977 as a countercelebration to the US federal holiday Columbus Day, when Native Americans proposed the replacement to the United Nations International Conference. By moving away from the celebration of Columbus Day, the celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day recenters Indigenous perspectives and allows people to gain better understanding of Indigenous resistance and resilience in the face of colonization. At Beloit College, Indigenous Peoples' Day was recognized through efforts organized by the Campus Mounds Sustainability and Advocacy Initiative, a group of students whose mission is to educate the campus community about the Native American burial mounds located on our campus, along with Indigenous culture and history. These in fact, these efforts include a campus-wide email recognizing October 12th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. We broadcasted Native American music on the campus radio station. We streamed two documentaries featuring Native American resilience to the campus community, posters around campus with information about the Native American burial mounds on our campus, and stickers and buttons promoting Indigenous Peoples' Day. As we advertise these Indigenous Peoples' Days events, we were delighted to include the proclamation by the Beloit City Council. Thank you.
And thank you for being here this evening.
Counselor Levy did just join us, for the record.
Thank you. Item 3B is a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is nationally recognized every October and first began in 1981 by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence as a Day of Unity to Connect Women's Advocates Across the Country. And whereas Domestic Violence has affected members of our community and individuals throughout the world, many victims of this crime suffer in silence because they are afraid to seek help. And whereas, the National Domestic Violence Hotline is a nonprofit organization as a component of the Violence Against Women's Act. Confidential and free of cost, the hotline provides victims and survivors with self-life-saving tools and immediate support. Callers to the hotline, 1-800-799-SAFE-7233, will reach highly-trained advocates to offer compassionate support in more than 200 languages. And whereas, it is estimated that more than 10 million people experience domestic violence every year. Domestic violence can consist of physical abuse, emotional, sexual, financial, or psychological abuse. It can cause long-term trauma to individuals of every gender, sexual orientation, race, religion, culture, and socioeconomic status. And whereas, ending domestic violence requires the leadership of survivors, the collaborative efforts of law enforcement, public health officials, and community members. Now therefore, the President of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, honoring domestic violence survivors and advocates, calling upon residents, law enforcement, and health officials to speak out against domestic violence, hold abusers accountable, and assist those who are or have been victims of domestic violence. Presented this 19th day of October, 2020, Regina Duncan, City Council President."
And we don't have anyone present tonight, but I, I don't believe we have anyone present.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to say that we are certainly happy to recognize October as Domestic Violence Month, Awareness Month.
Thank you. Item 4 is Public Hearings. There are several. Item 4A is the 2021 Annual Plan and 2021 Community Development Block Grant Proposed Budget.
At this time, we will have Julie Christensen, our Community Development Director, to provide us with an overview.
Department of Housing and Urban Development requires each CDBG formula grantee, of which we are one, to submit a consolidated plan every five years and annual action plan each year. Both plans include specific objectives for housing homelessness, public housing, and community development, and include information on the CDBG process, affordable housing, and special needs population. The five-year plan was approved last year, so what's before you this year will be the annual action plan, which was included in your packet. Also as part of that, we do our CDBG budget. And how that process starts is by our application process, where you guys approve local funding priorities, then people submit applications, and then those went to CDA, and CDA made their recommendation, and that recommendation is before you tonight. And there is a summary of each application also included in the packet.
Slow down a bit.
Okay, sorry.
Before you begin, just for the record, I'd just like to make a note that Vice President Anderson will recuse himself from this item. And so if you could go ahead and move forward at this time.
So this first slide shows all the revenues for the CDBG program. So we are estimating $630,000 in grant funds, $350 in remaining economic development revolving loan fund, $135,000 in housing rehabilitation program income, which is from repayments, loan repayments, and then Neighbor Works Black Hawk Region Lending Program income of around $2,000. And then we are also allocating in next year's budget $10,000 of prior year unspent fair housing funds, which brings a total of $777,735, which puts your public service cap at 119,647, your planning and administration cap at 153,470, and then 20% of that can be actually from the grant, which is the 126. Our biggest, most of our applications come through for the public service agencies. So this screen shows you the proposed public service budget, which shows, I don't know, Regina, if you want me to walk through each one. I can do that. Beloit Meals on Wheels, $9,000. Community Actions Fatherhood Initiative, $18,000. Community Actions Rapid Re-Housing Program, $5,000. Community Actions Permanent Supportive Housing, $5,000. Echo Rent Utility Assistance, $10,000. Family Promise Emergency Shelter for Homeless Families, $10,000. Family Services Case Management for Domestic Violence, $10,000. Health Net Primary Care Medical Dental Vision Clinic, $10,000. Project 1649, that's for Robin House, $10,000. Retired Senior Volunteer Program, $7,647. The Boys and Girls Club, $5,000. State Land Literacy Council, $10,000. Salvation Army Supportive Service, $10,000. And YWCA Rock County, zero, based on the fact that it's a duplication of existing programs in the city of Beloit. And then, as you may recall, we did as part of our consolidated plan, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas, which we call the NARSA's. So we are proposing to fund Community Actions Resources Navigator at $50,000. Merrill Community Center at $15,000. Our neighborhood cleanups have been very popular, so Merrill Community Cleanup for $3,500, and Hackett Community Cleanup for $3,500. And then the Community Social Worker Position, the other navigator for family services, for $50,000. And then Echo Rent Assistance, so this would be explicitly geared towards those areas, $50,000, or $8,000. Neighbor Works Black Hawk Region Direct Home Ownership Assistance, $8,000, for a total of $138,000. Some of these are public service agencies, and we are allowed to fund them outside of that 15% cap I mentioned earlier because of the NARSA plan. And then 152, 335 for code enforcement. And then under our Planning and Program Administration cap, and the program administration funds the salaries, like part of my salary, Ashley, our grant administrators, Dawn in accounting, the positions in Terry, the positions that directly touch the administration of the program, at 128, 224. And then Fair Housing Activities, that allows us to do outreach and education for fair housing with our EOC for $5,000, for a total of 133, 224. And then under Housing Activities, the Housing Rehab Loan Program at 168, 144. And then Neighbor Works, some additional direct homeownership assistance for $18,000, which those can be citywide, for 186, 144. And then WIBIC, which is basically business assistance, at an amount of $48,000, which gives you a total of $777,350 in programs. So tonight is just your night to listen to any comments from the public. This will actually be on your agenda for action at your next meeting, along with the plan itself. If you have any questions about the applications themselves, there is a, you know, a little summary included in the packet as well.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you for going through each line item. Much appreciated. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the Clerk Treasurer, please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any public input on this item.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. There will be no action on this item tonight, but it will be on our agenda for action on November 2nd, 2020.
Item 4B is the 2021 Home Investment Partnership Program, known as the HOME Proposed Budget.
Again, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide us with an overview.
The city of Beloit is a member of the Rock County Home Consortium. So this consortium is Janesville, Beloit, and Rock County. And as a result of that, being a member of the consortium, we receive an annual allocation of home dollars each, you know, each year. And we amended that agreement in 2016, so that starting in 2017, we receive 28% of the total project funds. And then we also receive funds for administrative activities, like the staff time to operate the program. So and for 2021, we are estimating that the city of Beloit will receive $165,000 in new home grant dollars and $18,265 in home administrative dollars. In addition, we anticipate using $268,000 in program income and $743,000 in prior year funds. Due to just COVID, we had a number of housing construction projects that were delayed, but some of those projects have already been scheduled and maybe actually because it's old money, we will, and it was in your last year's budget, we will start working on them this fall. The CDA did recommend awarding $160,000 in total funds available for owner-occupied rehab loans, with the remaining balance to be used for acquisition rehab and new construction projects in our NARSA area. So we're focusing those dollars in those two neighborhoods. So this slide shows you the sources of funds, which is what I outlined earlier, and then the uses of funds. So we're showing $936,000, which would be for new construction, acquisition rehab, and then down payment assistance as those houses are sold. Homeowner rehab of $160,000. And then we, as a consortium, do an application to all the CHODOs, which are community housing development organizations, and there's 15% that comes off the top of the consortium pot. And so that gets awarded separately through Janesville's budget. But there were basically two projects in Beloit and two in Janesville. So what we decided to do is split it, so half of the money comes to Beloit and half the money goes to Janesville. And then we are subsidizing the rest of it with our home allocation. So that's that $80,000, which will allow the Wisconsin Housing Partnership to do a new construction. They are currently underway for doing, they're finishing one up at 335 Highland. They're going to start another one at 321 Highland and 354 Euclid on two lots they purchased from the city, and they're going to, they've just awarded those contracts recently, so they're going to move forward with that. And then administrative expenses of $18,265. And the projects that got delayed that we are kind of moving forward, just so the council is aware, is 1256 Dewey. We awarded $80,000 last year for community action to do a new construction, which they are starting right now. They're getting ready to start. And we are also putting together bids for 737 Bluff, the house we bought by the church, and new construction for 1235 Dewey. So we are starting late this year, but we'll start those projects this year, and then there'll be some expenditures in 2021. But tonight is the night for your public hearing, and then you will take action on this at your next meeting, along with all the other budget approvals.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the Clerk Treasurer, please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any public input on this item.
Thank you. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. There will be no action on this item tonight, but it will appear on our agenda for action on November 2nd, 2020.
Item 4C is the 2021 Operating Library and Capital Improvements Proposed Budget.
Now we'll have our Finance and Administrative Services Director Eric Miller to provide us with an overview.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm also going to go through line by line the budget.
Oh, no, you're not.
Just kidding, of course. So tonight is the public hearing for the proposed operating budget, as well as the capital improvement plan. So the overall budget for all funds is about $99.5 million, which is just under 1% increase over 2020. The general fund is made up of $34.1 million, about 3.84%. It's just over $1.2 million. And then, of course, all enterprise funds collectively are about $19.9 million, just over $343,000. So this slide shows the high-level summary of all funds by fund type. You can see that it increased by 0.92% overall. The majority of the increase is made up from the general fund and the special revenue funds, and then there's some offsetting decreases in the internal service funds and the capital improvement fund, again, for a total of about $900,000 increase over last year. So some of the highlights that we have in the budget for 2021 that are mostly personnel-related are the Emergency Management Coordinator position is the only new position that we have in the budget for 2021, and that's spread out over multiple funds. And then the full year of the Fire Chief salary is in there for '21. Based on timing of the recruitment in 2020, there was only 75% of that position budgeted in 2020. We're also in a trial phase of the Dragon Law Enforcement Voice Recognition software that is taking place currently, and we're looking to implement that fully in 2021, which will have an impact on the operating budget in the Police Department by allowing two vacant part-time records clerk positions to be eliminated. There's also minor changes that we make each year throughout the budget to look at differing positions for allocations of salaries throughout the multiple funds, and we did that again for 2021. So some non-personnel-related highlights include the shared revenue. That is flat. It has been for over a decade now. That's not a great thing, but at least it's not cut, so we'll take whatever we can get from the state there. The expenditure restraint is showing a reduction of $44,000, but that's due mostly to the tax rate and the actual assessment ratio that we have in the city. That has a direct impact on our expenditure restraint calculation. We did see a reduction in highway aids of about $82,000. I think this is actually the first piece of state aid that actually has an impact from COVID-related items. These are directly related to gasoline taxes that are sold throughout the state, and I think this is our first one that we're seeing in 2021. Everything else is proposed to be status quo for 2021. The personal property aid is actually just a correction of a calculation that was made when they first took personal property out of the budget in 2019. So we were actually overpaid a little bit in 2019. This is just a correction of that calculation. A net new construction is up to 1.95%. That's up from 1.23% last year. So there's positive growth in the city, and that's shown by the assessed and equalized values increasing by 1.27 and 8.9%, respectively. There was an increase proposed in the property tax levy of $435,000. $100,000 of that is related to debt service. The levy is still restricted by the state-imposed levy limits. Only the debt service piece of that is exempt. So some of the other things we look at are user fees on an annual basis, and we try to get those fees to be reflective of the underlying costs of providing those services or programs. And various fees were analyzed, and some of those adjustments that we did make for 2021 include the right-of-way permits, erosion control, and some shelter rental changes. On the utility side, we did propose a 3% increase in the wastewater utility fee. This, of course, is related to the expansion of the capacity and the upgrades in the wastewater treatment plant. Those are much-needed improvements in order to continue to provide good service to the city, as well as providing expansion opportunities to be able to further growth in the city, which of course is one of our strategic objectives. There is a comprehensive water study that's currently underway. We're looking to apply for the, or submit the application by the end of the year in hopes that we can have the rate effective in the fall of next year. Those, of course, are designed to help maintain the vital infrastructure that we have on an aging water system in order to provide clean, safe drinking water. So here is our proposed tax levy that we talked about a couple of slides ago. So you can see the increase of $435,000, which is a 2.72% increase over last year. And that is reflective in a $0.23 per thousand of assessed value, which is a 2.09% increase in our overall tax rate. Here's a graph that shows where we've been in tax rates. These are city tax rates only. Since 2016, you can see that we've only increased just over $0.46 per thousand of assessed value over that time period, which is a pretty stable rate overall when you think about it. And then we have here the chart that shows the assessed and equalized values of the city. You can really see the growth in equalized values that's occurred over the last two years specifically. We're currently in the process of doing a revaluation that will get the assessed and equalized values closer together so that we can capture that rate in the tax base. So we have had the proposed budget presented, and we held a workshop last week, and tonight is the official public hearing for the 2021 proposed budget. The next step on your agenda would be to consider it for consideration for adoption in November at the next meeting. So there is no action tonight. This is just a public hearing.
Thank you, Eric. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the Clerk Treasurer, please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any public input on this item.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. There will be no action tonight. This item will be on the agenda for action on November 2nd, 2020.
Item 4D is Consideration of Resolution 2020-169, Approving a Planned Unit Development Master Land Use Plan for the Property Located at 1870 Post Road.
Our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide us with an update on overview.
So as a reminder, the planned unit development is, got a three-step process. The first step is this item on your agenda. Um, the second step is the rezoning, which is the next item on your agenda. And then, the third is the, um, site plan review or the final plan review. So, you need both the PUD plan to be approved and the zoning to be approved for a PUD to go to the third step. So, um, Roger Teal has submitted an application for this planned unit development for the construction of a new office and shop building for their heating and air conditioning building on the vacant parcel located at eighteen-seventy Post Road. Um, a copy of that master land use plan is included in your packet. So, the proposal includes the construction of a new forty-eight-hundred-square-foot building, off-street parking areas, access and circulation driveways, and a fenced outdoor storage area. The applicant is seeking approval of a PUD in order to allow flexibility in building location as there are reduced setbacks being proposed as part of this development, and also to allow an outdoor storage yard in a commercial district. Plan Commission did review this item on October 7th and voted five-one to recommend approval of this last land use plan, subject to the ten conditions recommended by planning staff. They did remove a staff-recommended condition relating to tree preservation since the applicant has already removed the trees prior to getting the staff report. We did, um, if you saw on the Plan Commission staff report, we did hear from a member of the Iva Court Condominium Association expressing concern about the development. Um, and then, we did also receive a letter from a neighboring property owner in opposition. Um, and it was, um, emailed out right before plan. We read it into the record, and I wanted you guys to see it, so we put it up in the front before the staff report so you would have an opportunity to read it yourself. But they did, um, recommend approval subject to the conditions which are included in your resolution. That's before you tonight, um, which is that, um, as a condition of approving the PUD master land use plan, the City Council does hereby stipulate the following conditions and restrictions upon the development. This approval authorizes the construction of a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot office and shop building for tealy, heating, and air conditioning and related improvements as shown on the attached PUD plan. The proposed privacy fence shall be white PVC at least six feet in height and may not be chain-linked with slats. Barbed wire or razor wire fencing is prohibited on the subject property. The fence shall have a setback of at least five feet from the lot line or greater, if necessary, to preserve mature trees. Vehicles and equipment may not be stored outside of the building or fenced outdoor storage area overnight. The outdoor storage area may not be gravel and shall be paved with asphalt or concrete. In terms of exterior signage, the applicant is allowed one primary sign and up to three secondary signs, no larger than thirty square feet in area, consistent with the standards in the C2 District. The signs have to be explicitly defined in a PUD. In accordance with the walkability policy found in the transportation policy of the comp plan, the applicant shall construct and dedicate public sidewalk within the right-of-way along the full Post Road frontage of the property, along with a private sidewalk connection to the public sidewalk. For the purposes of this PUD approval, this building is deemed to be a non-industrial building, and therefore, metal may only be used as an accent material on exterior walls. No more than twenty-five percent of the exterior surface of any wall may be metal material. Um, the applicant shall work with planning staff when marketing and selling their current business location at eighteen-twenty Cranston Road to ensure that buyers understand the limitations associated with illegal non-conforming home occupation in a single-family zoning district. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain site plan and architectural approval, which shall include a detailed review of all site, grading, utility, landscape, and lighting plans. The driveway shall be directly across from Scotty's Drive, and if this necessitates relocation of an existing stormwater inlet, said relocation shall be at the applicant's cost with a development agreement. And then, the tenth condition is our standard condition about major changes coming back through this public proj- process and minor changes being approved administratively. And this is on your agenda for action this evening.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the clerk treasurer please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any public input on this item.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now ca- closed. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved by Levy.
Moved by Counselor Levy. Is there a second?
Second by Counselor Prushel.
Now, go down the list and get questions and discussion from counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Uh, no, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes, thank you. Uh, very briefly, I, I wonder if Ms. Christensen could, um, just help me better underst- understand item number seven about, uh, marketing and selling the current business located on Cranston Road. It made me no more than reading it again to me in slow motion, but could you clarify that a bit, please?
Um, so, they currently operate their business out of their home. So, they operate their, um, heating and air conditioning business out of their home. Um, so, basically, what we're saying is that they shall work with staff when marketing and selling their current business location at eighteen-twenty Cranston Road to ensure that the buyers, any buyers, understand the limitations associated with illegal non-conforming home occupation because their house is currently zoned single-family.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, now, I understand.
Okay.
Okay, were there any other questions, Counselor Blakely? Next, I'll go on to Counselor Forbeck. Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do, and I guess I just need some clarification. It seems that this particular lot was already zoned for commercial. And does that mean that there could not have been a home placed on that lot?
Not without a conditional use permit.
Uh, if I could-
Okay, so-
Just a minute, Nancy. Uh, if we could have, uh- Go ahead, okay. All right, go ahead, Counselor Forbeck.
Well, I, I had just read, um, Mr. Pickett, you know, sort of passionate letter, and knowing that we certainly need no more homes in Beloit, um, I was going to say that it seems to me to make sense to keep that a residential lot, except then, when we're reading this, it wasn't zoned for residential. It was zoned for commercial.
Nancy, Nancy, I can, I think I can clear it up. I can clear it up for you, Nancy. So, the letter speaks to a property that was zoned residential, that was attempted to be rezoned multiple times. That property is not, is not this property. It is eighteen-ninety-nine Post Road. So, this property-
Okay.
-has been zoned commercial. It was actually owned by the real estate company that owned the building to the, is it to the east of it?
Okay.
So, it was commercial this whole time. Um, you know, it is adjacent to residential, but it has been zoned commercial. And the property that Mr. Pickett discusses is eighteen-ninety-nine, which I can attest to the fact that multiple applications came. When I looked through our records, it was as early as nineteen-eighty-five and as late as two thousand and five. I bet we had ten to fifteen applications to rezone that. And Phil Pickett and his neighbors came out, my understanding is every time, they came out the times that I was there, with a petition to oppose that, and council always supported that. But that was a property that was zoned single-family, um, and I believe had a house on it. Where this is a vacant lot that's zoned commercial.
Okay. Does this lot already have a commercial building on it?
No, it has a driveway on it, which clearly was used when there was a restaurant south of that. Um, I remember it as something else, but everyone else remembers it as Chucks when they, when it came up at Plan Commission. I wasn't here when Chucks was there. But that's what everybody says when I, when it comes up. But it was a couple restaurants after that, and then, there was a fire. Um, but there was a driveway that went from Post to the backside of that property. But it, otherwise, it was vacant this whole time.
Okay. So, we're not taking a residential lot away from the neighbor's then? This has already been deemed a commercial lot?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You have any other questions, Counselor Forbeck?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do, um, kind of questions, clarification. Um, so, as Counselor Forbeck says, that this property is already zoned commercial. So, theoretically, this business could, uh, build on this site regardless. I mean, as it is zoned, is that correct?
Could put, they could build a commercial building on it, but without the PUD, they cannot do the reduced setbacks or the outdoor storage.
Okay. And then, with the PVC fencing, that's like PVC vinyl?
Yeah, it's the white typical fence you see in some residential neighborhoods.
Okay. All right. Um, so, it's helping the, the business accommodate to that land and, um, be aesthetically nicer for that residential area, in essence?
I mean, they are, I mean, they are here tonight, but at Plan Commission, they did share that they were gonna try to make it fit in with the neighborhood and, um, that their daughter is a landscaper and was gonna help them to landscape it properly so that it would be more in fitting with the neighborhood. So, I think because they were, it was located on their house property this whole time, they've always taken great care to be a good neighbor, and that is their plan in this case as well.
Okay. Thank you. And the clarification that, um, you provided and, uh, that it is already commercial-
Yeah.
-is, is very helpful. No further questions, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Uh, no, they've all been covered. Julie did a great job covering all of that and keeping track of all that history, and appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I believe this has been to, this is just my comment, it's been to Plan Commission, did this one, and it was a five-one vote?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And before we move on to vote, um, if City Manager Luther could, uh, offer some comments to us?
I just wanted to briefly express that I know our Economic Development Director, who is, does not happen to be here this evening, um, but he has worked with these individuals to, uh, try and keep their business in Beloit, that they wanted to, um, go to a, a site outside of their home-based site, which has been in Beloit for years and years. And so, from staff's perspective and working with them and knowing that other sites outside of our community, um, were potentially where they could have chosen to go, um, we were quite pleased to see a solution, uh, for the future of their business right here in Beloit. With that, um, those are the only comments I had.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 4E is consideration of ordinance number three-six-eight-eight, amending the zoning map, zoning district map from C2 Neighborhood Commercial District to PUD for the property located at eighteen-seventy Post Road. This is first reading.
At this time, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide us with another overview.
So, this is the second step in the planned unit development process. Um, so, as the clerk treasurer read, it would rezone the property from C2 to PUD. Um, this is on your agenda for a public hearing and first reading only. And Plan Commission did recommend approval five-one.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the clerk treasurer please provide any public input that was received?
I did not receive any input on this item.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading. Can I have a motion to lay over this item?
I will make that motion, this is Prushel.
Okay, it was moved by Counselor Prushel. Is there a second?
Second by Blakely.
Second by Counselor Blakely. Now, I'll take questions and discussions from our counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Uh, no.
At this time, there is a motion and a second to lay over this ordinance. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 4F is consideration of ordinance number three-six-eight-seven, amending the zoning district map from R1A Single Family Residential District to R1B Single Family Residential District for the properties located at twenty-six-forty, twenty-six-sixty, and twenty-six-eighty Jerry Thomas Parkway. This is first reading.
Thank you for coming tonight. We have some people that came in from the community, we appreciate that. Um, at this time, we'll have next up our Community Development Director Julie Christensen, our devel- Community Development Director, I'm sorry, to provide us with another of overview.
So, Park Meadow North, um, was laid out forever ago, it feels like. Um, and then, when the housing market kind of crashed, um, development stopped. And there is a new person, Petri Trust Number nineteen-eighty-nine, who has bought the lot, remaining lots in Park Meadow North, I think it's plat three. And they have retained John Kenaby of Acadia Homes to construct spec homes on all the properties. What he's finding is that there's a couple properties, twenty-six-forty, twenty-six-sixty, and twenty-six-eighty Jerry Thomas Parkway, that are difficult to develop with the current setbacks. Um, R1A, which is what, this is rezoned, um, is what it's zoned right now, has a front setback of thirty feet. R1B has a front setback of twenty. And so, they're requesting, um, a rezone to R1B to still keep it single-family, but to allow for the development of these parcels that aren't quite as deep as some other parcels. Um, and then, this would, and the single-family dwellings are still permitted, um, as part of this zoning district. And Plan Commission reviewed this and recommended approval. And Nancy, this does provide lots for single-family houses, which we are excited to see because what we're seeing right now, um, in the community is a variety of different housing types starting to be constructed. So, there's Park Meadow North, Eagles Ridge, and the Oaks, which gives us kind of a mix, which is nice to see.
Great.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, the- At this time, the public hearing is open. With the Clerk Treasurer, please provide any public input received.
I did not receive any public input on this item.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading, can I have a motion to lay over this item, please?
I can move.
Moved by Councilor Forbeck, seconded by Councilor Keys. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I don't.
Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, thanks.
Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Councilor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't. I was at the Plan Commission meeting and everything was covered thoroughly, thank you.
At this time, there is a motion and a second to lay over this ordinance. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We have arrived at public comment.
We have reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to the meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to the meeting?
I did receive one public comment today. It says, "Subject PFC from Dorothy J. Harold, twenty-two eighty-four Boulder Court. In two thousand sixteen, something occurred that caused three members of the PFC to resign over the selection of a new police chief. I have no knowledge of the particulars in that case, however. In this era in which we now find ourselves, the authority of the PFC must be highlighted and respected. I hope the members of the PFC are well aware of their authority and will not be undermined by any external pressures. The citizens of Beloit deserve a fair and impartial process without undue influence. So let's let the PFC do their job." And that is the only public comment that I received.
Okay, and are there any other members of the public that submitted a form to address the council this evening?
I do not have any public forms.
And are there any members of the public that didn't, that did not sign up, that wished to address the council this evening? Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? Public comment is now closed.
Item six is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Staff needs to remove item six D for review. Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda? Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda? At this time, okay. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Item six A through, let's see, six A, six B, six C, and six E?
Move approval Levy.
Moved by Councilor Levy, is there a second?
Second, also Pruschel.
Second, was that, which one was it?
Pruschel, it was Forbeck and Pruschel were talking at the same time.
Right, and I couldn't tell which one. Let's say, I couldn't hear which one it was. Let's go Forbeck. I'll just say seconded by Councilor Forbeck. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
Those items were approved unanimously. So item six D is a referral to Plan Commission, application for conditional use permit for a medical office in an M two.
Staff requested that that be removed from the agenda. So we will not be taking it up this evening, thank you.
So there are no licenses, there are no ordinances. Moving on to appointments, there are two this evening, and so they will be taken by one motion unless a counselor wishes to have other options. Otherwise, we'll do that by one motion. The two appointments this evening are to the Appointment Review Committee, Mardel Jacobson, replacing Rebecca Wallandall, to a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and to the Landmarks Commission, incumbent Chris Gallagher, to a term ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Can I please have a motion to approve the appointments?
Nancy Forbeck, I approve.
Moved by Councilor Forbeck, is there a second?
Councilor Blakely, seconds.
Seconded by Councilor Blakely, any discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
The appointment passes unanimously. We are at counselor activities and upcoming events.
Okay, we'll begin with the councilors. If you'd like to share your, any committee report, you can also do so at this time. We'll begin with Vice President Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just over last weekend, as not only a good community volunteer, but also a member of the Downtown Blue Association, I volunteered at the farmer's market. Councilor Pruschel was there, and so was Councilor Keys. It was good to see everybody again for the second time in a week. It was nice to see both of you there. The last thing I'll just bring up really quick is just get out and vote. We have in-person absentee voting starting tomorrow, actually, between tomorrow and Friday, October thirtieth, between eight AM and five PM. We also will be offering a Saturday voting option on October twenty-fourth, between eight AM and four PM. The city staff have done a great job making as many accommodations to get out and vote. So really, there is no excuse to skip out on this election. You know, there's way more than just the president on the ballot. You have your state representatives and members of the US Congress on the ballot, and we also have a referendum for Blackhawk Technical College. So if you want to get out there and make your voices heard, you got some time to do it. If you prefer to vote on Election Day, that is an option as well. Once again, thank you to staff for doing everything possible to help everybody get out and vote.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Vice President Anderson. Councilor Blakely.
Yes, I also want to encourage citizens of Beloit to get out there and vote. It's a basic American right, and it's a very important year. On the city's website, there's a lot of information about voting, carefully prepared by our city Clerk Treasurer and her staff. So please check into that. And as Councilor Anderson said, if you would like to vote early in person, that does start tomorrow at City Hall. I also want to mention that all the workers will be taking precautions to help keep the public safe from COVID- nineteen. So once again, there's no reason not to vote and every reason to vote. As a friend of mine likes to say, "Vote as if your life depended on it." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Blakely. Councilor Forbeck.
I really don't have any comments other than saying, "Here, here," to voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Forbeck. Councilor Keys.
Thank you, President Duncan. I echo the call to the polls, and I also have an update from the Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission. We met on the twelfth, and we welcomed a new commissioner. And we also had consensus on the installation of another, a second born learning trail that would be in Riverside Park and sponsored by ABC. So that's very exciting, family-friendly, outdoor, safe activity to enhance young learning that will be coming our way. And then there was also, will be a partnership with an Eagle Scout and a hammock park installation in one area of Big Hill Park. And then our director's report was really quite impressive on all the upgrades that the city will be doing around the community. So just to quickly go through, there'll be lighting upgrades at Field Park. The pool and bath house will be receiving repairs and upgrades. The Rotary Center will have exterior upgrades. Grinnell Hall will have a new dining room floor. We will be installing ADA walks at five of our parks and installing a new cemetery parking lot. So very exciting and impressive projects coming our way. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Council Keys. Councilor Levy.
No report.
Councilor Pruschel.
No report at this time.
And now my report, report. First, I want to mention that I had the opportunity to watch the Virtual 2020 YWCA Women of Distinction Event on October fifteenth. This event honors inspirational women who have made a commitment to our community as leaders and role models, being a catalyst of change with vision, creativity, initiative, while improving the lives of others. So I want to congratulate these amazing women, including Dr. Marijuana Pepsi Van Dyke, Mary Fanning Penny, and our very own City Clerk Treasurer Lori Stotler. Let's give them a hand. Also, I want to give special thanks to our reopen Rock Task Force members, along with Cecilia Ramirez, for their efforts in distributing free face masks to residents. It's important that we continue to wear masks and take the necessary safety precautions to slow the spread of COVID- nineteen. Also, it's been great to see our staff joining the fun, and I noticed that some of our city buses had masks pictured on the front of them. Way to go. Now to my activities. I attended the Appointment Review Meeting on October twelfth, and I'm happy to report that our committees are almost completely filled. And Vice President Anderson can attest to that as well. There are a couple of vacancies left. If you're interested in volunteering, please go to the City of Beloit website. Next, I joined councilors in participating in a budget meeting at the Beloit Public Library. We held the public hearing on the budget earlier tonight, so I want to take a moment and give special recognition to Eric Miller, our Finance Director, and his team for putting together a great budget for this year, despite our tough budget restraints. And also, thanks to our City Manager, Department Heads, and City Staff. Let's give them a hand, we gotta stop and do that. All I can say is we are truly fortunate to have exceptional professionals working for the City of Beloit. I want to close tonight by saying that our council truly appreciates all the public comments, input, and concerns from residents via our email and at our council meetings. And that we may not always agree on issues, but please know that we are listening and are making decisions that we believe are best for our entire community. I also ask that we be more kind to one another, even if we have different views. It's a challenging time for all of us, but we are in this together, and we will get through this together. That said, I encourage you to make your voice be heard. Exercise your right to vote. In-person absentee voting starts tomorrow, Tuesday, October twentieth, through Friday, October thirtieth, from eight AM to five PM. And Election Day is on Tuesday, November third, and the polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. If you should need more information or want to volunteer to work the voting polls, go to the City of Beloit website or Facebook page. Also, please drive carefully with all the road construction projects happening. It's important to practice caution and patience so that we can all be safe. This ends my report for this evening. Next, we will go to item eleven.
Item eleven is the City Manager's presentation, and the City Manager does have a report this evening.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick updates. Wanted to make sure that the public is aware that an item on the consent agenda this evening was to waive bus fares for the first week of new routes that are beginning on October twenty-sixth, and that will run through Election Day. The purpose of having the bus fares waived for that one week period is so writers can explore the routes without having to pay extra for them to learn how those routes are going to function. It gives those writers an opportunity to make mistakes without any financial penalty, and we hope that it will entice new writers to explore our new route system and encourage them to use it more frequently in the future. We have a new, completely new route to the Gateway Business Park, and we also want to highlight that and give individuals in Beloit an option to use the system. For clarification, the fee for the Beloit Janesville Express and paratransit services will not be waived. And the cash fare for city routes, which include the dollar fifty base fare and seventy-five cents for seniors and disabled individuals, would be waived. Bus drivers will not be punching individual writers' punch passes, and they will not require tokens. So we are excited to implement the new routes approved by the council and give an opportunity for all Beloit residents that coincides through Election Day to provide multiple opportunities to get individuals out to the polling places. I also want to quickly announce that Rock County Public Health Department and Rock County Emergency Management are partnering with Blackhawk Technical College and the Wisconsin National Guard to offer free COVID- nineteen testing for our community. This testing will be available weekly on Wednesdays and Thursdays from eleven to seven at the Blackhawk Technical College Central Campus. The first day of testing is on October twenty-first of this week, and the last day of testing is anticipated to be December tenth. So you can go to the City of Beloit website or the Rock County website for additional details. We are thrilled to have this testing available at no cost to all of our residents. And finally, before we move on, I have updated information from the Rock County Health Department in regard to COVID- nineteen case rates. And over the past week, there are seven hundred and thirty-two new positive cases in the county. Two hundred and thirty-two of those are in Beloit proper, or thirty-two percent of the total in the City of Beloit. Perhaps even more disturbing, there are an increased number of healthcare workers that are testing positive and increased hospitalizations. So we continue to implore our public to exercise all precautions they can to minimize the spread. That concludes my report.
Item twelve, twelve A, the City Council will adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section nineteen point eight five, sub one E, Wisconsin Stat.
to section nineteen point eight five, sub one E, Wisconsin statute, to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or the conducting of specific public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, namely to discuss the following: To discuss and consider a potential agreement between the town of Beloit and the city of Beloit for the provision of fire chief services; a potential sale of a small portion of land at fourteen fifty-nine Sixth Street. And I've lost the last page of my agenda to get the third item.
So at this time, so this time.
Okay, it's those two items, and we will, or may reconvene into open session.
So at this time, can I please have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
No.
Okay, I think I heard Pruschel.
Pruschel and Forbeck.
Pruschel and Forbeck. So I'll go with Counselor, Pruschel made the motion, it was seconded by Counselor Forbeck. At this time, there's a motion and a second to adjourn into closed session. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
I was just going to say that.
Counselor Levy, I'm so sorry. We are in closed session at eight eleven PM.
Are we on?
We're good.
Are we good? Okay. At this time, can I please have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the agreement between the town of Beloit and the city of Beloit for the provision of fire chief service? Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just once again, great work. This is a great team effort, so hats off to everybody involved.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, Madam President. My compliments once again to the city manager, the city attorney, and the other staff members who helped bring about this historical agreement.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Hi, just a comment that I'm impressed with the work staff has done to put this together and Chief Keys for wanting to take it on. This is a historic moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. And my comment, especially during such a difficult time dealing with COVID-19, we are immensely proud of this partnership that will provide efficiencies and service enhancements to both communities. We are making history together, the town and the city. And thanks to our city staff for their hard work on this endeavor. So at this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely. They tried. I heard it. Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
And next, can I please have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of a small portion of land at fourteen fifty-nine Sixth Street? Is there a motion?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck. Is there a second?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pruschel. Now I'll take questions and discussion from counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just a comment that this makes me so proud to be a city counselor when city staff comes up with compassionate and reasoned action. So thanks again to everybody.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
At this time, I will now accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Forbeck, so moved.
Moved by Counselor Pruschel, seconded by Counselor Forbeck. Any discussion? Hearing none, with all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned, and this ends our city council meeting for this evening.
Great.